Great, we're good to go.
All right, great. So being six thirty P M on Wednesday, June seventh, twenty twenty three, and have a quorum, I'll open the I'll call to order item one, call to order the Bridgewater Planning Board meeting for this evening. This meeting is being recorded and is being held remotely in accordance with the provisions of the Open Meeting Law. Pursuant to the governor's approval of a supplemental budget bill, temporary provisions pertaining to the Open Meeting Law have been extended to March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Specifically, this further extension allows for public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate and alternative access to remote meetings. The language of this extension does not make any substitute change to the Open Meeting Law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from from March thirty first, twenty twenty three to March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely and shall address questions through the Chair of the Board. Additionally, we'd like to make the following points. At the start of the meeting, I'll announce, after this, I'll announce the name and the members who will be participating remotely. And that that'll be recorded, the meeting minutes, all votes will be taken as roll calls, and members of the public body must be clearly audible to each other and to members of the public at all times. When holding an executive session remotely, the public body must still take the required procedural steps upon entering into an executive session in open session. At the beginning of the executive session, each public body member participating remotely must state no other person is present or able to hear the discussion at the remote location, unless the public body has approved the presence of that individual. So that's some new language that we have in regards to remote remote meeting instructions for this evening. Patrick Driscoll, the Chair. Mister Raymond Raymond Gemian is a voting member. Mister Michael McDonald is the Vice Chair and a voting member this evening. Mister Stephen Geller is a member and a voting member. And Miss Astor Rohas is a voting member this evening. We do have two alternates, and I believe M J Spagon is in attendance and Mister Ted Haley. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely. Robert Rully, Mister Robert Rully, the Community Economic Development Director, Mister Shane O'Brien, the Town Planner, Mister Greg Tansey, the Town Engineer, Mister Stephen Solari, the Building Commissioner. At this point, the public's mics are muted, the board's mics be unmuted as their whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project's representatives mics be unmuted. If a project of the public hearing allows a public comment, we ask to use the chat feature to ask you to ask your question by listing your name and your address and your question. The Chair will recognize the question and order through the host, Mister O'Brien. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu, and you will be unmuted when the Chair or the host recognize you. Again, before stating any comments or questions, please state your name and your address. If you're on the phone, you get that'll start nine to raise your hand. Okay, so that's what we have to read in. Item two on the agenda this evening is an executive session. At six thirty P M, we have received a notice from attorney Jason Rollins that he is unavailable this evening. And he asked us to postpone this to a later date, and he'll provide us with that date. Item three on the agenda is a public hearing. This is for one forty-five Winter Street map. Eighty-eight lot, is it twenty-one? It's being proposed by sixteen thirty-five Broadway Realty Trust, a site plan review under section ten point five of the Bridgewater zoning ordinance with waiver request pursuant to section five point three point five, excuse me, six point three point five of the Bridgewater zoning ordinance. This has been continued from our May third meeting. So we're in item three, I have opened that public hearing. And if Mister Diaz, I see he's here, so if you'd like to take over Mister Diaz, why don't you give us an update on the project?
Mister Chair, it's under section ten point five, uh, ten point six, not ten point five.
Well, I apologize. I left my glasses at home tonight, so.
It's okay. I just wanted to clear for the record.
Yeah, I apologize. Mister Diaz, if you're ready to go, I'll turn it over to you, and Mister O'Brien can allow you to share the screen.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mister Chairman. For the record, Eric Dias, Registered Professional Engineer with Strong Point Engineering, representing the applicant for one forty-five Winter Street. The last time that we were here, I think we were kind of working out some kinks and narrowing in on on a final product that I think the board could be happy with. We've made some strides based on the comments that we received from the board, and I'd like to walk through those just very briefly. I'm going to share my screen. And I'm going to pull up this plan. And I'm gonna kind of go, one kind of leads into the next. This is our landscaping plan. At the last meeting, one of the waiver requests we had was for a reduction of a required ten-foot landscape buffer along the western side of the property where the residential houses sit. I believe it was actually the Chairman who voiced that he was not in favor of such a waiver. So what we've done is we've taken another look at this, we provided some additional screening through that ten-foot buffer zone, which is what's required by the bylaw to give a nice vegetated buffer for at least ten feet to the property line. And as a result, we had to take this retaining wall in this location and move it a little bit closer to the parking facility. That leads into a discussion about the retaining walls, and I'm just gonna switch my sheets to the grading sheet, because you can see things a little bit better. As we move, too far. As we move the retaining wall a little bit, we're narrowing down the waivers request that we have, we are left with two waiver requests. One is that your bylaw requires a wall no more than six feet tall, which is what it was previously. However, as it moves closer, it gets a little bit taller. We're at about six foot nine with the wall now to accommodate the set, the the setback requirements. The other thing that we require, your bylaw says that any wall greater than six feet should be terraced or tiered. In this case, if we were to tier this wall, again, we would encroach on that that ten-foot buffer. So there's a little bit of a trade-off here. But we did, however, specify on the plans, and I believe it was a member Geller's request, did this be a poured concrete retaining wall with a fieldstone veneer finish? So we did incorporate that into the plans. Another thing that we improved upon, you can see right here, is a centralized dumpster location that we can then screen. We had originally proposed rollout dumpsters for each unit. It was noted to us that if we did that, we would have to screen them individually or bring them inside at the end of every day. We thought that that was a little bit impractical to to ask the tenants to do that. So we've got a centralized dumpster location right here. In addition to those couple of things, we did locate trees along Romney Road in Winter Street as we were asked to do. We added those to the plan. And wherever we can, we have indicated to save those trees. We're also supplementing, we're planting twenty-nine trees, where we're proposing to remove, I believe it's twenty-three. The fence along the top of this retaining wall is no longer proposed as chain link, it's proposed to be a six-foot vinyl fence. What else? Centralized dumpster location. We have indicated on the plans. We talked about snow storage and admittedly the site's a little bit tight for snow storage. So we've added some language to the plans that once it reaches its capacity, it needs to be trucked off at the expense of the owner. The last thing that I just want to highlight, and I think it's not from a civil perspective, but if I go to this sheet here, we have provided updated architecturals, which I think was a hard item that the board really wanted to see. So this is just a generic rendering of what these buildings are gonna look like. Color palette, palettes, finishes all hold true. We've got some placeholder signage here, obviously, that'll be determined on each tenant what the sign actually reads. But this is what these things are gonna look like. And as we move through the set, we've got floor plans here for each each one of the two buildings in some elevations indicating that these are gonna be insulated metal panels, aluminum doors, aluminum framed windows, things of that nature. So I think that's a that's a big step up from the hand-drawn renderings that we had before. We did receive comment back from the city and the town engineer indicating that he is satisfied, his comments have been satisfied. And we did receive a pretty favorable memo from Shane's office today as well. So we we think that we've worked to address all the board's comments, and we're hopeful that we have, and we're glad to hear any further comments that you might have. Mister Chairman, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, so at this point, I'll open it up to board questions or comments. For Mister Diaz.
Mister Chairman, just one, one question. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, just the the idea of vinyl fence is not my ideal, because the vinyl doesn't seem to hold up very well. They either break or they turn moldy or whatever. I'm thinking that we need something besides vinyl. I I realize wood can be a problem too, but vinyl isn't exciting in terms of long-lasting fencing.
I I think, just if I can address that through the Chair. I think we're open to suggestion. We had previously proposed chain link, and I know that doesn't give the privacy buffer that we're looking for. We thought vinyl did. If the board feels strongly about another type of fence, I think that's certainly something that we can entertain.
Mister Jimmy, anything else at this point?
No, that's all, Fred. It it seems that many of the issues have been directed.
Anyone else from the board?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, and I thank the applicant for taking our comments seriously and addressing a lot of them, but I I, you know, I see Ray's point about the vinyl fencing, and I'm the one who brought it up, because it is more privacy, but I think if you go with a fairly, you know, not a cheap vinyl fence, they actually do last. So that's just my comment on the vinyl. Other than that, I have nothing else at this time.
All right, any other comments at this point?
All right, I just, I'll go, I feel the people think about what they want to say. Mister Diaz, thanks for addressing a lot of these issues. You know, as I said, I I was concerned about that ten-foot buffer along those residential houses, because this is an area that's that a butts a private road, it butts a it butts a residential dwelling or two. And it faces a, you know, residential street in pot, so thanks for addressing a lot of those issues and keeping that screening on on Winter Street. And you get that ten-foot setback. So I, and I also appreciate you identified, I think at the last meeting I asked, you know, because Romney Road is is a private road. There is a residential home on there. There is you know, a number of there's a large business down there and another business at the end, and we hope that there are more quality businesses there later on. I did ask that you retain those, that row of lodge pines, and I understand based on the grading plan, and you've identified them, that eighteen of them have to be removed, so I can appreciate that. But the one thing I would ask, or I would like to see as a condition, is that if we are gonna remove those eighteen trees, that those pine trees that do provide a clear delineation between this property and the private road, Romney Road, just just so we don't have cars driving over it, trucks driving over it, and then it's up to Romney Road to police. If we could, you know, I was trying to look at it today and say, you know, what's what's the right number here? And I just, if if we could, if you remove those eighteen pine trees and then along the Romney Road, there's like a ten-foot grass strip there. If we could add eighteen, eighteen, you know, native pine eight footers there, just mixed in there, so that there is a clear delineation. And we don't have people trying to pop the curb and things of that nature. I I don't think a fence would look attractive. I think if we kept what you have already proposed for for landscaping and added the the eighteen, you know, eight-foot, you know, pines, if if the applicants willing to do that, I think that would that would go a long way in screening the product property and maintaining the look of Romney Road and protecting the residential home that's adjacent to it as well, so. At that, this point, that's that's all I have, because the architecturals were provided, I was concerned about the ten, the ten-foot buffer, I was concerned about the buffer in the front on on Winter Street, and you provided all that, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Is that something you'd be open to adding the eighteen pine trees along that Romney Road?
I am checking in with my client on that right now.
Okay, I just, I think I think it would go a long way, and we require a screening in the in the business be you know, on the on the streets, and I know you did it on on Winter Street, but it'd be nice to do it along the the Romney Road as well.
Well, how, Eric, how wide is that? You said it's ten feet?
The scales one, the scales one to twenty that I have, and just looking at it quickly, it looks about a half an inch.
Right here, I have a note that it's seven and a half feet in this location.
Yeah, so that's why I just feel if we add some trees that because you you have a little grass strip right next to that road, if we if we, and that's why I wanted to try to maintain those pines. But you demonstrated you can't maintain them, so if we could replant, you know, those eighteen. You know, we can make that a condition. We don't need to hold anything up tonight, but just if we could, if we could make that a condition, and basically take those eighteen and spread them out along that the length of Romney Road in that seven and a half foot wide area, I think that'd go a long way.
Would we, would we be replacing the the plantings that are currently proposed there, Pat?
No, I said in addition to.
Gotcha.
Mix them in.
Let me, let me ask, we are proposing in that strip right now, some more sparse trees in this location here and things.
And I looked them up, a couple of them were shrubs, and you know, there are, this this one with the multiple lines on it is shrubs and whatnot.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, if you want to, you know, if you want to remove the shrubs and just keep the trees and put and put eighteen, you know, pines along with the the deciduous trees that you have there, that'd be fine.
Okay.
I'm just trying to create a, you know, I, instead of putting a long white fence along it, or instead of putting a a a guardrail or something of that nature, I think if we just blend in eighteen, you know, eight-foot pine trees, it would really aesthetically make it look a lot better and provide a clear delineation between the the two properties. So it's so that Romney Road doesn't have issues, this developer doesn't have issues, et cetera. That's that's done, you know?
I'm sorry, Shane, were you saying something?
Uh, no.
Okay. I I think if we can scrap the shrubs that we have shown here now and we can maybe, we can work with that condition.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Would you be satisfied with us working with Mister Diaz? Or an amount of trees?
Well, I think, I think, I think, I think so. There's not a debate, and we're all clear tonight what we're gonna get. There's eighteen being removed to replace the eighteen, but spread them out. So we have, so we have some a clear delineation and some screening, that's all.
And your preference would would be pine trees?
What's being removed? Yeah, native pine trees, yeah. Eight foot. But let's see.
A a foot in height or?
Just, just eight foot in height, six, you know, eight to ten feet, just something, something substantial. We're taking, that's if you drive down there, and I went down there again today, that that it's a substantial row of pine trees. It really creates, you know, a a nice delineation between the two properties, it creates, you know, it's it's a very nice look, and I think if we can maintain that, I I know it's impractical to keep it, and it has to be removed, so if we're gonna remove it, let's just replace it and and spread them out, that's all.
Mister Chair, let me just ask this question. I I've actually recently priced very similar trees for a separate project of my own. And I know the eight foot is very expensive, could we get away with six footers to start with?
Sure.
Okay.
As long as, as long as the eighteen are there that are replaced, yeah.
So.
I mean, you can mix, you can leave the shrubs and trees that are there and mix the pine trees in too, so it breaks it up a little, you know? Just mix, to keep, keep what you have, and along that pavement area, the seven and a half feet, mix in eighteen pine trees, six footers.
I, the only comment I have is you just have to make sure there's space properly that, you know, you know, it might end up being fifteen when you get them all in there, if they keep the shrubs in there, I just.
Right.
Yeah, my comment is, we could do something similar to what we did a couple of projects ago at nineteen twenty-five Old Plymouth where well, I'll obviously show you.
Yeah, I I just, I just, I just think they're cutting eighteen out, let's just have a number, mix eighteen in and call it a day. I mean, it will go to six footers, it's fine.
Okay.
There's, how many, how many feet are there? From pavement edge to pavement edge that, I I have it right here, on that seven and a half foot strip, Mister Diaz.
Uh, let me hold on, let me go to my other plan. I don't have that number readily available, but I can get it.
Well, the Romney Road. Yeah, I don't, I don't have the frontage along the Romney Road on that plan.
Yeah, the Romney Road frontage in that location is four hundred and thirty-two feet, so we probably got a good three fifty of pavement in that location anyway.
You you can easily fit the, I mean, that's a ton of area, though. You can easily fit the eighteen in that space, space plenty.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Where are we with, where are we with the fence?
Well, can I, if I may, Mister Chairman, first I I agree with with the Chair regarding the trees. I totally agree that they should, they should be done. Regarding the fence, if we, if a vinyl fence, a quality vinyl fence can be put up, then that's fine with me.
Okay, any other board or staff comments before we open it up to the public?
No, I think you guys pretty much, I think everyone, I think comments have been answered in behalf of the staff as well as, I know, town engineer memorandum as well, so.
So Mister Diaz, speaking of the town engineer memorandum, there's one comment that still remains, but I think it's just something you need to correct, and and I don't have it in front of me. And one of the comments he made, he said everything was satisfied, but he said that you're still considering powder Romney Road, the drainage calc. Has that been addressed? I know, I know it's it's fine, but is that something that needs to be removed off a plan or something?
No, that's actually been addressed in his most recent comment, I believe, and I can pull it up, says that that item has been satisfied.
All right, no matter what we get today, it was still, it was still in there, but that's, that's okay.
Yeah, that that has been satisfied in the drainage calculations. I don't know if he just didn't include it in his response to comments. But it it has been taken care of.
Okay. That was right, one of those. Second, second or third page.
Yeah, right. Here, and he does, this is the one where he says that it doesn't comply with standards, but then he does go on underneath that to say satisfactorily addressed here in italics, so I believe we're all set there.
Okay. Any other board of staff comments? If not, I'll open it up to the public. Are there any public comments at this point? Are there any members of the public that would like to speak?
I do not see any virtual hands raised. And there is no one in the comments.
Okay. Do we have any other staff questions or comments?
Nope, other than the fact that staff did, as recommended by the board, provide a draft decision for this project for the board to look over and consider. So if the once we get to that point, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that draft decision, but our comments and our our issues have been addressed, and we can edit and update the decision letter accordingly, based on the comments made today.
And Mister Diaz, just before we take a vote to close the public hearing, there is no issue with adding eighteen. Let's call them six, I think they come with what, six to eight-foot lengths, six to eight-foot sizes?
Thank you.
Six to eight foot, eighteen, six to eight foot, you know, native pines in that already landscape, already proposed strip there, so they'll be mixed in amongst what you already proposed. That's not an issue.
Well, certainly, we'd we'd rather not, but if the board feels strongly that that needs to be a condition of approval, then so be it.
Okay. Any other comments, or do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So is that, is that, I got one more comment, is that dumpster pad gonna be, those dumps are gonna be fenced in, right?
It is, yes, yes.
Is there a detail for that somewhere on the plan? I didn't, it's not on the set I have, because it's been updated.
Uh, let me just check real quick to make sure that there is, and I believe we do have a detail. Yes, we do have a detail on the plan.
Okay.
On sheet C, excuse me, D two.
Mister Geller, you all set?
I am.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing, or do we want to continue to discuss it?
Hey, can I just have one clarification, Mister Chairman?
Sure.
And that is, Mister Geller mentioned that there is such a thing as a quality vinyl fence. Can that be put into the agreement that I'm not sure how to call it, but maybe Mister Geller has a way of delineating what a quality fence is, but I think that should be in the
Oh, I'm sure there's different mill, I'm sure there's a different mills and thicknesses of of plastic vinyl fences, I mean, if, you know, I don't know, maybe we could say it has to be a heavy duty.
I'd I'd be happy, as part of every project, I do a conformance review, and I'd be happy to check the sturdiness of the vinyl fence. I think as presented on the plan, it does state a vinyl fence. But I can make sure that the applicant provides not a flimsy fence, part of that conformance. If there's any issues, I'm happy to ask them to provide a more sturdy fence.
Shane, I just want to add something, then you've got somebody from the public with their hand up.
Yeah, I, no, I saw them.
We can add in a condition that requires the maintenance of the fence and replacement, if there's any damage to the fence, meaning to address Mister Jamian's concerns.
And I believe that's a typical condition of the the decisions that I provided as well, that everything be maintained and replaced in accordance to the initial decision and plan set. But we do have a member of the public raising their hand.
So, okay.
Hi, everybody, I'm Christine Ranko. I actually live at seven Romney Road, so we're at the property that's adjacent to this location that you're discussing, so forgive my ignorance, this is a, the first time we're at a, on a meeting like this, but I was just hoping that you could just repeat, if you don't mind, what will be in the, in that area that's sort of near our property? Can you just repeat, is it a tree line or fencing? I'm sorry, I wasn't able to follow that.
Do you're in the home, you're in the home that abuts the property on Romney Road, is that correct?
We're right in between that property and Prisco's.
Mister Diaz, you want to bring that, is that plan still up, Mister Diaz?
I can bring that up, yeah, no problem.
And if, I don't know if you were on early, but we just, one of the things we were discussing with the applicant, because you do live in a residential home on a private road there, we were asked for some additional screening to you know, further delineate and and provide some privacy to both you and the owners of Romney Road, so.
Okay, thank you, yes.
So I believe through the chairman, this is the area we're talking about, where we just talked about putting in those pines, is that right?
No.
Um, I don't think so. I think we're over to like, yes, as I think that's where we're on the other side of that, yeah.
This area here. So right now, there's just, there's a little bit of a tree line that's gonna be left there as a buffer zone between the properties. But up to approximately close to the property line, we're gonna have to clear to put in a stormwater basin.
Okay. Okay.
So just, Mister Diaz, just to to provide her with some clarification, can you tell her approximately how far away that, is that a retaining wall is in the building is from her property?
Yeah, the retaining wall was about fifty or sixty feet away from the property line.
And how about, how about the building?
The building in this location, let me go to this sheet up here is approximately ninety-five feet away from the property line.
Okay. All right, but there will be trees. I think that's pretty much like our main concern, that there will at least be something. I mean, we obviously, that's a concern of ours, and so I just wanted to double check.
So on on the plan, Mister Diaz, that tree line, there is a tree line shown that's remaining, correct?
Yes, it it's cut right to the product, well, just about within a few feet of the property line, on our side of the property line. But on the opposite side of the property line, it extends into that property even more, so there is a bit of a buffer there.
Okay.
And and I can't, I didn't hear you pronounce your last name, I'm sorry.
Um, last name is Ranko, H is silent.
And so so we did, we just asked, in addition to that, is this about three, there's about three hundred and fifty feet of pavement along Romney Road? We just discussed with the applicant, because they have to clear those pine trees along Romney Road, those those old growth plant pines. And they proposed some landscaping there, in addition to the land. And they proposed some landscaping there. In addition to the landscaping proposed, we asked them to add another eighteen, six to eight foot, um, native, uh, pine trees dispersed evenly, you know, amongst that three hundred and fifty feet, just to create an additional, uh, buffer.
Yes, we heard that, that's great, thank you. Um, I'm sorry if I missed this part, but is there like, um, just to give us a timeline of when we can expect the project to start?
Uh, through the chair, I know, um, the applicant is very eager. We have a stormwater permit through the Conservation Commission that we've already applied for, and we need a public hearing for that. Um, and I would assume that as soon as we get that, we are gonna be off and running. So I would estimate within the next thirty-ish, give or take maybe forty-five days, uh, we can start to see some activity out there, provided that we're approved here tonight.
Okay, and how long does something like this usually take?
Uh, if you have an aggressive construction, um, team, which I, I believe we will, there's no reason this can't be substantially complete before the winter.
Okay, so it'll just be throughout the summer, we should expect that construction to be happening.
Yeah, there, I mean, there may be some, you know, some landscaping and things that happen come the springtime, things like that, but I would think the most of the heavy stuff should be out of the way.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your help, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ranko. Um, do we have anybody else in the public that would like to speak? Anybody else from town staff, anybody from the board? If there's no other comments, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
By Mr. McDonald, do we have a second?
I can second, yeah.
By Ms. Rojas, any discussion? Uh, Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. All right, so, um, time to deliberate on the project, um, board thoughts, comments, uh, we have a draft decision letter provided by Mr., um, O'Brien. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. Um, I know, um, we have two waivers that we have to act on as well. The, um, the two waivers, Mr., uh, O'Brien would be traffic and would be the, um, wall in excess of six feet, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
What is the total length, the total height of the wall right now, the maximum height?
I believe Mr. Dias stated it was six feet, nine inches.
Seven feet, I thought he said, yeah. Okay, all right, so, um, are there any comments on the project, anything we'd like to discuss? All right, I mean, the, the only other condition, Mr. O'Brien, that I'd like to see is that, you know, in that area of seven and a half roughly feet, that, that is between the, uh, paved parking lot and Romney Road, I'd like to see what, I'd like to see what's proposed for exist, for, um, what's proposed to re, to be, to remain, and then have, um, eighteen additional, uh, six to eight foot pine trees mixed in along that, that length of the parking lot to provide, um, you know, delineation and, and, and privacy for, for the residents and the owners of Romney Road.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll add a, a, a condition to, um, prior to construction, that the applicant, actually, it may be prior to endorsement, um, that the applicant provide an updated landscaping plan, um, showing the fourteen pine tree is six to eight feet, um, along, I'm sorry, eighteen?
Yeah.
Yep, eighteen, sixty-eight feet along Romney Road. Um, so the applicant will have to provide us an updated, and as well as, um, and just to Bob's point, uh, there is no, in, uh, post occupancy, applicant shall maintain and replace landscaping, fencing and lighting as indicated in the site plan for the duration of the use. And the applicant use, shall use best practices to maintain the required landscaping and presentable and healthy condition, so that is a condition as current in our post occupancy, uh, requirements of this.
Yeah, was this draft decision letter provided to Mr. Dias?
No.
Okay.
But I'm sure he'll, he'll like it.
Okay. All right, and then we'll just add that condition about the eighteen additional, um, pine trees. Any other additional conditions that we'd like to discuss, board members? Okay, so, um, we have two waiver requests to, do we want to take those separately, or do we want to just include those in the motion to approve with the two waiver requests?
Either or is fine, Mr. Chair. Um, I just, I just would head, I would say that you're better safe doing two motions, um, on that, just in case if there's any issues with the waiver request at hand.
Okay, all right, so we have two waivers being requested on this project. Do we want to discuss those waivers? One is the traffic study. I don't know how the traffic study even applies, uh, Mr. O'Brien, because this doesn't trip to twenty-five thousand square feet, does it?
Um, I believe it, I think it's based on the size of the site, not the excess of twenty-five, twenty-five thousand gross square feet.
Right, but aren't the buildings like ten thousand gross? If I'm looking at this correctly?
Let me recheck. Maybe correct, yeah, it is forty-five hundred and six thousand. Um, so yeah, I guess, I guess it's a moot point.
Well, they asked for it, so we should probably.
I, so, yeah, I think there's a, I think there's a requirement within just site plan review. Um, so I think the applicant's just requesting that waiver, um, based on that information.
Okay, so do we have a, a motion to either approve it, deny the, um, traffic study for this project?
I'm gonna motion to approve that.
Approve the motion to, um, waive the requirement?
Yes, sir.
So a motion by Mr. McDonald through the second?
Okay.
By Mr. Jemian, any discussion? Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian? Mr. Jemian?
Ray, can you hear us?
I think you froze.
Ah.
I was muted.
Okay, how about now?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay. Sorry.
Are you a, are you an affirmative or a negative?
Um, I'm an affirmative.
And I'm a yes, okay. So the next request we have, uh, for waiver request we have is to waive the, uh, maximum height on a retaining wall, um, above six feet, um, and Mr. Dias is proposing seven feet. Do we have a request to waive the, um, six foot versus the, versus the, uh, do we have a request to waive the, the height allowance?
I'm making a motion to accept the waiver for the restriction on the, uh, retaining wall.
By Mr. Geller, do we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Jimmy? Any discussion? Okay, I'll take the role, um, Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Let me, yes. Okay, so now we have to vote on the project. We have a draft decision letter in front of us. We talked about an additional condition of adding the eighteen, uh, six to eight foot pine trees along the Romney Road length roughly three hundred and fifty feet, incorporating with the existing, uh, proposed plantings. Is there anything else we'd like to consider?
I'm satisfied.
Do we have a motion to approve with that additional, um, condition?
So moved.
And Mr. McDonald, do we have a second?
Second.
Was that Mr. Jimmy?
No.
No, I mean.
No. No.
I, I did and I, and Astro did at the same time, so.
You know.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, so. All right. So Mr. Mr. Geller, it's fine, okay. Mr. Geller, second it? Yeah, any, any discussion? And just to be clear, we're adding that one, uh, planting condition.
Yes.
I'll let, I'll let you, um, review the draft decision, Mr. Chair, as well, before you sign it.
Any discussion? Okay, no discussion, Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Dias.
Thank you all for your time and, and staff for all your help, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, item four on the agenda, um, we have some board business, uh, planning board hearing items, um, this first item and item four is Scotland Boulevard. This request, uh, for substantial completion and the return of the remaining surety. I'll turn this over to you, Mr. O'Brien.
Sure, so, um, earlier in March, um, the board voted to, uh, return a portion of the road bond for Scotland Boulevard, where the bond amount was for, um, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, where the board released four hundred and forty-seven thousand approximately, uh, leaving about seven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars left in the bond to be held. Um, those funds were held for the purposes of them completing the concrete base course for the Cape Cod berm, uh, cleanup and flushing of the drains, uh, police detail and as-built survey and plan in contingency costs too. Um, thus leaving us with seven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars to be held, um. Since March, we have, um, reviewed and received as-built plans for this, um, Mr. Tanzi had sent us a letter saying that he's satisfied, and, uh, we are, we received that request from Parker Property Management as well for those monies, and um, the work has been completed to our satisfaction, um, so, um, I know, uh, Jay Souzer is here from, uh, Parker, uh, Property Management, um, if you have any other questions, but, um, on our end, we're okay with the release of the rest of the funds.
So Mr. O'Brien, just in Mr. Tanzi's email dated May fifteenth, there were, uh, three minor items he wanted added to the plan. One was to change the name, uh, from a partial as-built to a finalized built. One was to add the final revision date, and one was to, uh, call it section of the Cape Cod berm added. Has that been done?
That, yes, that's correct. So that item was from the partial as-built sent over prior, so there was a previous email that Jay sent over showing a partial as-built. Um, the as-built plan addresses those three comments that Mr. Tanzi had, and he's satisfied. Um, I talked to Mr. Tanzi, um, in person regarding this, and he had no issues.
Okay, and this is the TPFP Limited Partnership that's requesting this release, correct?
Um, that is correct.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak on behalf of TPFP at this point?
Uh, I'm here, uh, Jason Souzor, Parker Property Management, um, parent company TPFP. Um, no, uh, everything's been completed. Uh, we sent everything over. I had our Collins Engineering, um, color the berm that was added and, um, sent over. And I believe that's it. The road is, uh, been completely paved, all berm has been put in, and it's good to go, and um, all the catch basins have already been cleaned for this year, and um, yeah, our, our regular stormwater maintenance process is ongoing as usual, and we're just ready to take on the summer.
Great. All right, so we've heard from Mr., uh, Dan's report and from Mr. O'Brien, is there any, are there any board questions for the town staff at this point? Saying none, is there a motion to release? Do you want to give us the final amount, Shane, or do you want us just to say?
Um, I would say release of remaining funds, it's approximately seven thousand five hundred ninety. Um, but based on holding it in a bond amount, it may be a little bit more. Um, so I would just state that the, the release of the remaining funds, so it's approximately seven thousand five hundred and, um, ninety dollars.
Okay, do we have a motion by anybody?
I'll make a motion to release the, the, uh, funds.
Motion by Mr. Geller, do we have a second?
Second, second.
Second by Mr. Jimmy? Any discussion? Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Let me, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Good night, everybody.
You too.
All right, so next on the agenda, under planning board hearing items, we have, uh, the Spriggs Place Pinnacle Point, request for a subdivision extension, they're seeking a two-year extension request. Mr. O'Brien, do you have any comments on this, or do we want to turn it over to the applicant at this point, if they're available?
Um, we can turn it over to the applicant. Um, we received a two-year request, um, for, uh, Pinnacle Point, um, to be extended, uh, beyond July of this year. Um, so the new date would be based on this extension request, July of twenty twenty-five, um, but I'd be happy to let the applicant address, uh, the extension request, so we have Mr. Silver, Mr. Silver here, what?
The permit is still valid at this point?
That is correct, it is valid until July, um, uh, twenty twenty-three.
Is there anybody that would like to add anything additional, the applicant or applicant representative or?
Um, Larry Silva from Silver Engineering. Um, I'm here um, for a number of things, and this is one of them. But, uh, this, uh, this subdivision hasn't gone as, uh, as quickly as my client would like to have had it gone. Um, it's, there's been a lot of challenges with it. I mean, it was started up basically in the COVID time period. Uh, there was a lot of issues with, um, dealing with the mass DOT uh, work on Broad Street, and also just the unique drainage design because of the significant grade changes. Um, there were some, uh, lots of, uh, sort of evaluation and consideration of maybe some alternative ways of doing it or different products and so forth to be used, uh, so there's just been a lot of, um, obstacles, uh, in, in doing this project, and so my client is asking that the board be patient with him and, uh, give him, uh, the two years to, um, to make sure that he gets everything a hundred percent correct.
Okay, do we have any, uh, board questions or comments, Mr. Silver or Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I, I just, my, my question is why two years and not one year, Larry?
I think, uh, so that number one, we don't have to come back to you again. If we get it done in the interim, then, you know, we're not we're not, we're not pressed to come back and, and, um, and, and extend it, you know, maybe for a couple of months that we may be over that one year. Um, I don't think it's gonna take the full two years. Uh, but, um, he, I guess we just felt that it would be safer to go for the two-year and, uh, and try to do our best to do it within the one year.
But what's wrong with asking for one year?
It's half as good. I mean, it really is. I mean, if you ask for the one year, um, you, you know, you, you know what you're dealing with here. You're dealing with short, short seasons for construction. Um, and there hasn't been a lot of activity of late um, on, on the site, so, you know, we got another s- uh, six, seven months of, of, of decent weather, uh, this season, not, maybe not even that much. And then, um, you're all of a sudden, you're back into the spring again. So I, I, I just think that, um, I don't think it does any, any damage, uh, for the planning board's point of view. It, there's no neighbors that are uh, being adversely affected by the activity that hasn't taken place. Uh, because they all are, the only, uh, real abutters are out front. So, um, they, they really haven't seen any real problem with the fact that there's been a delay. Um, so I don't, I don't know. I mean, I just, it just seemed to me that it was, uh, a, a, a better way to go to give him the, uh, the, the larger timeframe in order to make sure that he, uh, had adequate time to get everything done. He's not, he's not a developer in the, in the sense of some of the other developers that you deal with on a regular basis, so it, it, things don't go quite as smoothly as they may have if, for somebody who just goes from one subdivision to another.
So Ray, one year would be July tenth, twenty twenty-four, and then obviously two years would be July. And then obviously two years would be July tenth, twenty twenty-five.
My, my feeling is we have, we, we have rules that it's two-year time span and I've no problem doing it one year. And maybe if necessary, we do another one year after that. I don't see the idea of giving, starting out with four years in a sense that's what we're doing. That's all.
Any other board questions or comments at this point? Thoughts?
I do. Well, Larry Silver just mentioned that he's not your average developer. How many houses are left?
They, they, there are no houses that have been completed. He's still working on the roadway. He's not at the point. He has to come back to you once he's got all the infrastructure in and asked to have lots released for development. He's not at that point.
Yeah.
So just, just for clarification. This, the original approval rate was April fourth, twenty eighteen. I don't think any rules or regs have changed since then in terms of subdivisions, correct, Mr. O'Brien? I mean, other than minor things.
In terms of rules of subdivisions, the, the it would be still held to the standards of what it was approved by.
Right, but my, but my point is that if we did do a two-year, there, there's nothing that's really changed in our rules and regs that, that.
For friends, you, you guys can request any length of extension.
No, no, no. My, my point is, is that if we're gonna hear this again today, right? We probably, we'd probably approve it the way it is because it still, it still meets all of our current rules and regulations. It's not like in the last four years or five years, our rules and regulations as far as road layout, type of curbing or anything has changed, drainage analysis.
No, nothing. There's been no major changes in regards to layout and what the applicant received as part of approval.
Do we have any more board questions or comments?
I'm fine with the two as well. I find it highly unlikely that if they were to come back in a year, you know, we, we tell them no. So save the time, give them the, give them the cushion.
Well, does somebody want to make a motion for a one and a two, and then we can go from there?
I can set a motion for a two-year.
A two-year extension, which would be until when?
It would be July tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Can I, you know, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McDonald. I see, I see Mr. Jimmy's point. And I agree with him. If, if, if we had some changes to our rules and regulations and and we wanted those, we wanted the, the site to be updated to meet those. I could see doing a shorter one and making them, updating them, but as far, as far as I know, there's been no major changes to drainage, to lot layout, to lot size, anything like that. So.
And just to address that, Mr. Chair, it's, it would be near impossible to adjust the plan based on current subdivision rules and regulation standards, whatever. Whenever those rules and regulations change, the applicant is held to the standards that exist as current, similar to zoning.
Right, but, but I Mike, the reason I asked the question was, and Ray was part of these discussions before, we had some neighborhoods that had been kicking around for ten years. And our rules and regulations have changed, stormwater had changed. So we either gave them a one-year extension and that was the final extension, or, or we asked them to update the subdivision to come into compliance with our, with our current rules and regulations. But
Understood.
Looking at, looking at what we have before us, I think it still meets the pre and the post for stormwater. I it still meets the layout, the lot size, the curbing type is still the same, the underground utilities. I mean, everything I'm looking at is still in compliance with our current rules and regs. So that's, that's why I'd be comfortable with the two.
Yeah.
So we had a motion. Did we have a second? Is there any further discussion? So we have a motion for a two-year extension, which would bring us to July when?
Tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Jimmy?
No.
Ms. Rojas? Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes. So. Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, where's my agenda go? How we can lose stuff that's right in front of me? I don't know. Alright, next on the agenda, we do have a couple approval not required plans. The first one is for ninety-five Pleasant Street map, thirty-three lot eighty. Mr. O'Brien, would you bring that up?
Pull that up right now.
So we can turn it over to the applicant and then I, we did receive some information from the, the building commissioner, Mr. Solari and from Mr. O'Brien. So excuse me, with that being said, the applicant, if they'd like to discuss this plan? Mr. Silver?
Yes, Larry Silver, Silver Engineering. So yes, so this property is at the intersection of Union Street and Crane Street along Pleasant Street. The the, the lot that we're looking to adjust here is there were two vacant parcels of land that were part of a subdivision from the nineteen forty-three, I believe it was, somewhere around there. And since that time, the regulations had changed. So those two parcels actually merged together. And in this, and they had an excess of twenty thousand square feet. But what we're looking to do is to take a parcel off of that aggregated two lots and create a parcel A, which is not a buildable lot. What's not shown on the plan is really what we what we plan to do is to actually increase the area of the existing grandfathered lot, which was where ninety-five Pleasant Street, the house is located there. That, basically that, that house was built out of a different subdivision in nineteen thirty-five. And although the, the people owned both sides of this, they did not own them at the same time. They, the house was in existence. It was legal, conforming. And his grandfathered under zoning regulations. And so it does, it stands independent of the lot one that we're creating here, which will, has its frontage on Crane Street. And that's basically all we're trying to do is to divide off this parcel A, free that up in order to possibly improve the lot area that's on the grandfathered lot.
So I know Mr. Solari had provided us with a memo and then Mr. O'Brien. So Mr. Silver, just reading, I think it's, I read yesterday or the day before, forty-eight, section six. So why do you feel that only two of the lots merged and not all three?
It's very clear. Because in that chapter, it says that, that a lot that so basically the lot, which was a Union Street subdivision of nine lots and lot, this one in the front where ninety-five Pleasant Street is located was created in nineteen thirty-five, and that's when the house was built on there. It, 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 it was on, that house was in existence, was legal, was conforming. And had nothing to do with the vacant land that the people acquired nine years later. Because it was offered to them for purchase by Bridgewater Savings Bank, who had foreclosed on a subdivision that extended all the way back to Mount Prospect Street with a number of lots along there. So they bought those two lots. They just bought that additional land. They never at any time merged them on their own. And they, and that lot one is protected underneath that chapter and that you cited.
So so these were, so, so these two lots closest to Crane Street were always held in different ownership than this lot facing Union Street. They were not owned.
They were, they were other, they were land owned by the, by the same people that owned the house lot. But because the house lot is protected because it was legal and it met all the requirements in nineteen thirty-five when the house was built, it has standing by itself. It does not merge to other land. Merging is for vacant lots. The whole merging statute is for lots that were substandard. And then rules change that they have to be merged together to meet the minimum requirements. It does not apply to a house that's grandfathered and was not held in ownership at the time that it was built upon, was not held in common ownership with any other land.
Okay, I and I'm not an attorney. Maybe we need an attorney's opinion, but the way I read it, it said fifty feet, five thousand square feet of frontage and non-contiguous. So I just, in my opinion, and just reading Mr. Solari's, I would think that all this merged. But I don't know if we want to.
I don't follow what you're saying at all. What, what do you, what do you mean?
You just said all three of these lots were under common ownership, correct?
They were owned by the same people. They were not merged. They were, they were, they were three separate pieces that they owned. One was a house lot. And then they owned vacant land that they acquired nine years later. They were not together. They were not, they do not merge. The house is separate, that house lot one is a separate entity. Not, that has nothing to do with land that they acquired nine years later. It was legal, the, the statute is very clear. It's legal and met the requirements at the time that it was that it was built.
Do we have any other?
Language on the plan. But at the request of Shane, I took all that language off the plan because they said it would be too, Shane thought it would be too confusing for you guys to to see that as part of it.
So do we have any other board questions before I ask Mr. Solari, Mr. O'Brien to explain their correspondence? If there's no board questions on the plan, either Mr. Solari or Mr. O'Brien, would you like to? Go, go ahead, Mr. Sorry.
I'm going to disagree with Mr. Silver. If you read section forty A, I mean, forty-eight, section six, it does not say lots and existing house. It says land owned in zoning. The, the, the properties where they were zoned. The zoning change in this town was approximately, I think, late sixties to early seventies. And if you read forty-eight section six, it says if the properties were owned by the same pop potty and they were held through the zoning change, within a few years after that, if they weren't separated, they became merged. It's merged. It's simple. I, I tell everybody that comes into my office, if you're going to present something like this, you need a legal determination. This should not be presented by any else, but by an attorney. That's the only person that should be presenting this if they say that I am incorrect. And I think we need to go to an attorney. You're going to find out it's merged of the whole piece of property.
Mr. O'Brien, do you have? Mr. O'Brien, you mentioned that the parcel facing Union Street and Pleasant Street, because it is merged, is now being created with inadequate frontage. Is that correct?
Well, I just want to go to Steve's point. Rereading his letter over for, that was CC to the board. If his determination that it was merged, then it, it's not the, the board's duty to appeal said thing. That would be up to the applicant to appeal the building inspector determination. So based on that determination, we, we have to look at this as one lot. So the, the lot created does have adequate frontage based on A and R plan. Unfortunately, the property at the corner of Pleasant and Union does not have the hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage in that zone. If that property did have that hundred and twenty-five feet, then we'd be looking at an okay A and R plan, whereas parcel A has been labeled a not a buildable lot. Unfortunately, we can't label ninety-five Pleasant Street as a unbuildable lot as part of this. So I'm just going based on the building inspector's determination that each property would have to have the adequate frontage for the plan to be endorsed by the board. If, if, if the plan has changed, then I could recommend that we could endorse this based on this, but just rereading Mr. Solari's letter to the board, that parcel ninety, ninety-five Pleasant would also additionally have to have a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage.
You, you're missing the whole point of the grandfathering.
It is not the board's determination to make a grandfather decision.
But that's what they're doing right now.
Well, I, I'm going based, I'm going based on the building inspector's letter.
Which I have never seen, Shane, by the way, I've never seen, seen a letter from him.
I just agree. I, I sent you.
Today, you sent a letter?
No, no, no. This is the original letter I wrote to.
That was not the plan that's here.
It's still, it's still made the same determination.
Your, the letter that was sent to me said that you could not make any determinations or anything because there was not a lot created is what you said.
I did not say that.
Alright, you want me to find that letter?
I can pull it up.
Alright, so the bottom, the bottom line though is we have a determination by the building inspector that it's merged land and one of the lots doesn't comply with, with zoning because it has inadequate frontage at this point. So. Mr. O'Brien, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no.
I mean, I, the way I read it, it doesn't, I'm, I'm looking at forty-eight, section six right now. It doesn't say anything about a structure. It says lands.
Shane, do you have the original plan that I gave you?
The plan that you presented to us or to Mr. Solari?
Yes. The one that I presented to you, the one I originally submitted.
Yeah, I can, I can.
That, that's not before us though. So.
It, it, it is. I can, I can provide that. It was, I, I asked for some recommendations and changes to those plans, but I can provide the original. My, my reasoning with Mr. Silva was that we were getting into a discussion of.
Shane, can I say one thing?
Sure.
And, and I agree with what you said earlier. We have a determination from the building inspector that's to be treated as one parcel.
Yes, and that's what I'm going.
So we, we, we can't sign a Form A that doesn't have adequate frontage.
Right. And what's in front of you right now is the original ninety-five Pleasant Street plan that I did provide to the board.
And I, and, and, and look, and look at this right now. I agree with Mr. Solari's determination. So I mean, I
Could I ask that, just the section that's on this plan? That's on the right side there that, that states, you said you read chapter forty-eight, section six. And I have it in here verbatim from it. And I just wanted to make sure that the board understands what exactly it does say. And it says, if, if you, if you want, would like me to read it, I'll read it.
It's, it says it.
It says chapter four, on chapter forty-eight, section six. Any increase in area frontage width, yard or depth requirements of a zoning audience or by law shall not apply to a lot for single or two-family residential use, which at the time of recording or endorsement, whichever occurs sooner, was not held in common ownership with any adjoining land conformed to the then existing requirements and had less than the proposed requirements, but at least five thousand square feet of area and fifty feet of frontage. That's why lot one is protected.
It's, it's, I, I just, I disagree with that.
I disagree.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I say something? I, I, I think the, we should not be debating legal law right now. I think Mr. Silver and Mr. Solari should sit down and can bring this back to us at the next meeting.
Well, we have, we, we, we have a time, we have, we have a time, we have a timeframe. So we have to take action on this plan because we have twenty days. So, so based on what's before us, they can come back at the next meeting with a new plan. My recommendation would be that we, we, we make a motion to not endorse based on inadequate, inadequate frontage on the My recommendation would be that we, we, we make a motion to not endorse based on inadequate, inadequate frontage on the uh Union Street. What is that how you wanted us to state it, Shane, based on your memo?
Well, the applicant can come in with an, a new plan showing adequate frontage. However, I think the issue that they're trying to prevent is that they're creating, they would be creating their own hardship.
Right.
If, in the case of having to go before uh the zoning board of appeals for variance.
Correct.
It wouldn't even let me get to, uh, it wouldn't even let me get be before the Board of Appeals.
All right, so we have a, we have a plan in front of us with a determination from the building inspector, if it wants to be resubmitted, we can. So let's let's take a, is there a motion to approve endorsement or deny endorsement at this point?
I'll make a motion based on the building inspector's determination to deny the endorsement.
Do we have a second for discussion? Do we have a second? Mister Geller? And just so, just so that we're clear, Mister O'Brien, in part of this discussion, it's because it's creating a lot with inadequate frontage on the corner of Union Street, Pleasant Street, correct?
Um, yes, that would be also based on the determination that all the lots have been merged.
Oh, okay.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Well, we have a, we, 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 we have, we have a motion, so we have to address the motion, so. So we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion by the board?
Yeah, I mean, this, this is a bit of a tricky issue. I, I I can see the point Larry's arguing, and I see where Mister Solari's coming from, uh.
Well, I mean, it's, we have, we have a determination from our zoning enforcement offices, so. So we have.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is like a counsel case to me, I.
So we have a motion in a second to deny based on frontage in the building inspector's uh determination that the lots have been merged. Any further discussion? Mister Jemian?
Yes, I'm making a motion to.
You already, we, we, we had a motion in a second already, so this is voting on it.
Right.
Yeah, motion, motion to deny, yes or no?
Yes.
Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Abstain.
Miss Rojas?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda. We have another Form A. This Form A is for thirty-eight Harvest Lane, map seventy-four. Looks like lots ten and lots eighty-four.
That's correct.
Mister, Mister O'Brien, we did receive um an opinion from you on this one.
Yeah, we have no, we have no issues here. Um, the intent of the plan here is to adjust some of the lot lines. We received um signatures from both owners of lot ten A and as well as uh the owners of thirty-eight Harvest Lane. Um, so we don't have any issues. It's just adjusting some of the old lot lines and everything as presented remains the same. Um, there is a slight change in the frontage. Uh, but it doesn't affect anything that is proposed here.
Okay. Still more than a hundred and fifty feet on here, all right? So I'm looking at it right now.
Yes, that's correct. There's plenty. It's um the, the original frontage was two hundred and sixty feet, and that was reduced to two hundred and forty-nine point seven nine. Um, as you can see right here, so no issues.
All right, so do we have um uh any discussion on this from the board? Mister Silva, you're representing this one as well. Do you have anything to add?
It's, it's already been uh it's already been explained. I don't think there's anything else for me to say.
Um, Mister Solari? Board members, anybody? If not, do we have?
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R.
Motion to endorse?
Yes, sir.
By Mister McDonald, do we have a second?
Second.
By Mister Jemian? Any discussion? Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Rojas?
Yes.
Mister Jemian?
Yes.
Mister Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Yeah, thank you, Mister Silva. Um. Oh, you're still here, Mister Silva, right? Is this, are you representing, we have other business, Cranmore Estates?
This is more of an informative matter. Um, but um mistress, Mister Silva did note in the future that they would be coming in for a rescission of the subdivision, um but we don't have a timeline on that just yet.
And I did see, one thing I did see, Mister O'Brien, um so is this something you don't want to discuss at this point, just kind of an update?
It's, it's more of an update just because we received a letter from Mister Gummo um of the sale of Cranmore Estates. Uh, I know there's some additional work to be done. Um, or additional work that the board mentioned at a meeting, I believe, earlier this year or late last year regarding Cranmore Estates, but I just wanted to keep the board in the loop of the letter that we received from Mister Gummo of the sale.
And Mister Gummo's letter, I just, I don't think this is a matter for the board, and maybe we should loop in the town, but I would imagine that if he wants to transfer those assets to another party, would at least need a notary signature on his letter and probably something else um within the town. I think when those accounts are established, social security numbers are given and whatnot, so. In his letter, he says that um the final payment should be um plus escrow. It says James Walsh is now the owner of Cranmore. Um, at the closing, Mister Walsh compensated and agreed uh to satisfy and complete the town's bond requirements. Please issue him the final payment. So I think that's, I don't know how we handle that, but that's probably something that has to be handled with the treasurer in a more official way, so.
Yeah, we can, we'll address that with the finance office in terms of what they're comfortable with.
Okay.
And then we did receive a deed sale as well, um, that I provided to the board showing the, the sale beyond the letter.
That's your point, Mister Driscoll, the transfer of the funds, we just need to make sure that we're not going offshore someplace.
And there, we do have the two deeds for the lots and it looks like a deed for the road, so. Yeah. All right, so is there, so, so that's gonna be something that's coming before us. We, is there anything you want to discuss about it now, Mister Silver or Mister O'Brien?
Well, I just wanted to indicate the reason uh for this. Uh, Ashmont's uh business has grown very well. Uh, he has basically been the one that's been occupying uh many of the lots that were in this subdivision. Uh, and he has found that it would be in his best interest to actually rescind the subdivision and make this just one site that would be Ashmont's and be able to then number, number one, to be able to secure the site better from the street and basically create one, one campus site uh for his operation.
Okay.
So we will be submitting that. I know you haven't had too many recisions over the history. I think the last one may have been um uh the one off of Laurel Street there. Um there was one just next to, went uh next to Water Street and Laurel that was rescinded at one point in time. But there haven't been too many, but this is, that's what the procedure will be. If there's anything that we need to be aware of that the board would be looking for as part of that request for a rescission, other than what the stat- state statute says, I would just need to need to know, that's all.
Yeah, we would just have to familiarize the board with the work that hasn't been completed. I think the board has a, a, a general understanding of the money that we held or are holding and just understand what um will happen to those funds.
Okay. Um. Do you have anything else to add on that, Mister Silva?
I would just say that we would, once we rescind it with that part, that would be a request to return whatever escrow amounts are there, because those are being held right now for a subdivision. And when it returns to be a site, uh, there would be no reason to be holding something for a sidewalk or or whatever those were being held for.
But your office and Mister O'Brien's office will connect on what's formally needed, correct?
We've had some preliminary discussions, so yes, we can work that out, schedule a date before the board in the future.
Okay, thank you, Mister Silva. Thank you, Mister O'Brien. So uh plan, next item under board business, we're planning board minutes February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and March first, twenty twenty-three. And I know uh Mister O'Brien today sent over a revision of those minutes.
Yes, we um provided an update to those uh as Mister Geller did not um vote twice um at that meeting, so we did correct it, so to show that he only voted once.
So if we would like to vote on these minutes this evening, do we have a motion to vote on the minutes of my, uh, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and March first, twenty twenty-three? Or discuss them?
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Mister McDonald, so a motion by Mister Geller, second by Mister McDonald. Any discussion on those minutes?
I'm assuming this like uh discounts the amendment in with the uh the revision, rather?
Yeah, they came, they, they came through today uh in an email, so we'll adopt today's version.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so no more discussion. Um, Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister Jemian? Mister Jemian? Miss Rojas?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Jemian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thank you. Um, board items for the next meeting, Mister O'Brien?
Sure, um, we got a meeting in two weeks. Um is the continued public hearing for the um project at Broad Street, the Perkins Foundry. We do have the, a zoning hearing just of this board. Um, it was not referred to the C E D subcommittee. Um, so it'll just be a zoning hearing of this board for the uh, the amendment for the associate members of the planning board. Um, and as well as we have the accept, a street acceptance for Trinity Circle um for the board on June twenty-first. Um, we also have some other projects that I'll talk about at that meeting. Um, that'll be on for the July twenty-first um planning board meeting or July nineteenth, I apologize. So we'll have um additional projects.
In addition to the hotel?
Correct.
Okay, play substantial projects.
Um, we have a new pro, a new site plan review and a subdivision project of, I believe, three houses.
Okay. All right. Um, I don't know if we should push those out to the first meeting in August, if we can with timeframes or if we.
I would say that they, they submitted in mid-May. Um, and I would hesitant to push those out for three months considering how, when they submitted them.
Yeah, we can at least have started on, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mister O'Brien.
No problem.
Any subcommittee, board committee liaison reports at this point?
I don't have any, but uh I just want to point out that uh one of our members, MJ, gave an outstanding uh speech of the raising the pride flag. Really good job.
You, Ray. I appreciate that.
All right. Um. Planers report, Mister Rui or Mister O'Brien?
I have nothing.
I have nothing as well, and you remember that we canceled the July fifth meeting, so please don't come on Zoom on July fifth.
If you come, you're gonna be by yourself.
But, but we have another, we have another meeting prior to that anyway, so.
That's correct. But I'll remind you guys again then.
And just, just so I know, no complaints audio-wise with me tonight?
Yeah, yeah, crystal clear.
All the plans landed very easily.
All right, anything else? If not, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mister McDonald, second, or a second?
Second.
And Mister Jemian? Any discussion? Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister Jemian?
Yes.
Miss Rojas?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Has there ever been discussion about a, a motion to adjourn?
Just. Historically, probably start in Bridgewater, but maybe elsewhere.
That's a good point. Are you sure? We, we'll have to think about that.
Maybe we've set some time.
Probably, probably when someone motioned to adjourn at six oh, uh, six thirty-one.
I mean, I think the goal should be ninety minutes every meeting. Ninety minutes is good. I'm done after ninety minutes, so.
Sounds good to me.
All right, good night, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Have a good one.